Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, City Council meeting for the city of Lamar, Mayor Kirk Cresspin. You know, over the last couple of weeks, similar to our Facebook page on for the city of Lamar, we we have a Facebook page that we share information for the public. I myself as a mayor, I also have one out there that I try to share information, the things that I've been aware of and been involved in as well. And over the past few weeks, I've added a few different items, talking about Lamar Sportsman's shop, the new business here in town. Last week, we had an opening at the Cobblestone and their their first opening day, and it was a very exciting day for them, I'm sure, and we're looking forward to their grand opening and participating with them. I also put in there about the thirteen oh one tavern in the Cow Palace is coming up here in the near future, and they're starting to have more activity and more involvement. I always put those out there in an attempt to not only make the public aware of what's happening in our community, but also to thank them for their investments, because these are huge investments into our community. As a business, I know the Cobblestone and their partners and investors have made significant investments in our community, and it's very appreciated, just like the investors and the owners of Cow Palace, Lamar Sportsmans, and all of those others, as well as the Main Street shops. So there are so many businesses that are happening that's in the works right now. Their new business is coming up. There's been a lot of interest in our community. It's very exciting. It's very exciting to see that people want to invest in our community, and we want to keep that momentum going, and continue to strive to add businesses and jobs and growth to our community, and we hope that we can continue that. So if you haven't had a chance, get out and visit these businesses and support them, as well as support businesses that have been here for many years, because not only do we want to grow our community, but we want to retain and help support the businesses that we currently have. So that's my little spear spill before our council meeting. But with that said, we have Deborah Temez here tonight to start us off with our invitation. Deborah?
Well, I wanted to thank each of you for serving on the council as well, and we appreciate all that your wisdom that you offer. Well, Heavenly Father, we come before you and just so thankful for every member that serves on the city council. Lord, we ask that you would impart your wisdom and your counsel to them, that they would have discernment, that they would have the people's heart and well-being in mind with every decision that they make. We just pray you're covering over this meeting time and that you would bless and prosper our city in Jesus's name, amen.
Counselor Duffy, would you lead us in the pledge? I plead by allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic or which it stands, one nation, united under God, liberty and justice for all. Yeah, the time is now seven oh four P M. I will call the meeting order. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Mike Bellamy.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kurt Cresspin.
Here.
Mike Duffy.
Here.
Manuel Temez.
Here.
Anne Marie Crampton.
Here.
Rob Evans.
Here.
Kristen Swartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Okay. We've all had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. Were there any items that anyone saw that need to be separated out? That is voted on separate?
I didn't see any.
I didn't see any.
I didn't either.
Move, we approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Here, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the public comment section. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to participate in the audience particip- participation area? Seeing none? If you do have questions, of course, as always, you can direct them through Facebook or on YouTube, and we'll try to answer those during the miscellaneous items at the end of the meeting. So with no other items, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is city treasurer's report. Kristen?
Um, the only thing I wanted to mention tonight was I wanted to say thank you to the public and to the count members of council that attended the Brownfield um, public meeting. I think we had a fairly good turnout, and there were a lot of good comments and suggestions, and I just wanted to thank everybody for coming to that.
Great.
That was all I had, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. The next item would be the city clerk's report. Linda?
Um, so our January sales and use tax collected in February was three hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-nine cents, which was up eight point two four percent, or twenty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents from two thousand twenty-two. Our year-to-date collections are nine hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety cents, which is up three point five one percent, or thirty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents from two thousand twenty-two.
Good job.
That's all I have.
Does the council have any questions for our city clerk?
No.
No, no questions.
Okay, we will move on to the city administrators' report.
All right, coffee with Rob, fifteen twenty-two and twenty-nine March at Rivals McDonald's in Hickory House. Come on out and have coffee with me, and I know we've had some increased participation the last few weeks, so uh, come on out and tell me what you think about the city and things you want us to look at, and I know that the it's helping a lot right now. We're good ideas. Uh, spring begins Monday, March the twentieth next week. So be ready for that. The ale and stuff that comes with spring. All right, uh, storm spotter training, March twenty-second, six thirty P M. Uh, four H building at the fairgrounds. Pep annual meeting comes on March the twenty-third, my little sister's birthday, if you're watching. Uh, six thirty P M. At Las Bresas. Sees your first aid training, Saturday, March twenty-fifth, uh, one to three at the Bruin to Others. We have an E V ride and drive Friday, April fourteenth, uh, two to six P M. At Otero College Campus. Uh, I sent out a little update, but the projects, some of the big ones, we've been keep getting delayed a little bit, but as you see, everything's ready for the self-serve fuel to go in at the airport. All we're waiting on is the installation. It's all it's it's there, but the people to come in and help with the installation, it's all set up, it's ready to go, but now we've got to get it installed, so it's very soon. Keep telling you that, two weeks, but it should be less than two weeks now. And miscellaneous, if you guys had any, oh, that's right, miscellaneous, we had the the release from the North Gateway Park, the revenge and all that kind of release from the state, we no longer uh, have to, you know, have, we want to take care of it for ourselves, but we are no longer under requirements to come back and show continual improvement there. It's very nice. He said, she said, we should be very proud of the the job they did out there. They did a lot of work. Good job, Pat.
Good job. Hey, do we have any questions for the city administrator?
I don't have any.
I did, but Kirk took care of it, talked to you about it, the swing over at the park that was vandalized.
Boom, that's right.
Yeah, so that could be cleaned up, because it's not very nice stuff on it.
Yeah, I think, uh, you'll notice that we've we've done some maintenance up there, and we fixed a couple of places, some safety issues with fences between a couple of the courts up out there, so we'll get right on.
Because it wasn't good.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, there are no other questions for our city administrator. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is reports and correspondence from the council. Do we have any reports?
I don't.
The only thing I have is, uh, mostly all the council has a picture there. Yesterday, Rob and I and several, uh, firefighters, my son and Ignitee and Stephen Warren, as well as a lot of citizens who are with community building, to preview this one, this is kind of the clay. Um, help me out, Rob.
Statue.
Statue, yeah. It'll be bronzed over and will be placed over there at the nine eleven out by the museum. And I thought it was very well done.
Oh, yeah.
Work in progress.
He said several months, four months of of this version, he had a small version, he, you know, digital scanned it, he redid it several times, but this whole project's been about ten years in the making, so.
Yep, it's fully funded by nine eleven committee.
So the Miss Volk?
Yep.
Okay.
It's all ahead.
Thank you. And that is a very nice sculpture. I know, uh, they spent many hours working with the fire department and to make sure that it was authentic at the time and um, all the details were made. That's what I was told by some of the members, so that's great.
And and to add to that, once this one's done, they will work on one for the law enforcement as well as military.
Great. Okay. Um, we did have a card here from Kristen Volk, who is one of our police officers. Uh, she was just thanking the council for all the kind and the community for all the kind words and prayers, encouragement, and patience as she's recovered. Uh, she hopes to get back to work soon and really appreciates her support, the support through this. Um, as some of you may know, Kristen was in an accident a few months back, um, very, very serious accident, and she was here today and seems to be doing much, much better, so we look forward to having her back, uh, to work in the future and wish her the best of luck on her recovery. I also spent a little bit of time outside on the way in with Don Williamson, one of our other officers who had surgeries and multiple surgeries and issues over the last six months, but has been working towards coming back to work on the twenty-seventh, so looking forward to him returning as well. So that's great. Did you have anything, Joe, Mike?
No, I didn't have nothing.
No, okay. With that said, we will move on to the next item, which is our new business. For our new business tonight, we do have the three, four, three different public hearings. And these public hearings, um, are for liquor licenses. Uh, Lamar Hospitality is our very first one. So this is the public hearing for hotel restaurant liquor license for Lamar Hospitality LLC, D B A Cobblestone Hotel and Suites here on Lamar. Um, we can move into this public hearing if we had a motion.
So move. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to move into the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Oppose, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
Okay. All right, so with the public hearing, um, anytime we do liquor license, um, we act as a quasi judicial system where we review all the information on licenses that come to the city, and we help to make a decision on that. So with this public hearing, we'll start off with the information from the city clerk. Would you like to speak on this one?
Sure. So Lamar Hospitality LLC, which is D B A Cobblestone Hotel and Suites, um, they submitted an application on February seventh, um, included with their fingerprints and and all their fees. On February twenty-seventh, I, um, requested to schedule a public hearing for today, and everything was posted onsite and in the paper by March the second. And other than that, I will turn it over to Chief Police.
Can we give you the details of this, and I would recommend that be approved?
Okay. All right, and all the publications were done on as scheduled, as you said, right?
Correct.
All right, so with that said, we will open it up to any questions for the council. Do you have any questions for Linda or the chief before we move forward?
Okay. None, no.
All right, with that, we will open it up to the floor. So generally, when we open up the floor, we'll open it up and invite anybody in the audience, um, to come up and speak for or against the license for Cobblestone. So do we have anybody here tonight in favor of? Would you like to speak tonight?
You take it, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, just come on up and let us know your name and your city residence for the record.
My name is Peter Page. Uh, I am a city, I'm a county resident, how about that?
Okay.
Uh, and I am the managing investor of the hotel, and, uh, this is Tony Gotta, who is the onsite.
I'm also a city resident as well.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was your name, sir?
Tony Gotta.
All right, would you like to speak in favor or let us know anything before we get started?
Uh, I just think it would be having uh, liquor being served in a hotel does afford us the opportunity to provide a safer environment for people to consume alcohol. That way, they're not out on the streets driving after they've been drinking, they're just going stairs a floor or two to their rooms and then going to sleep. So I think it would be a protected place.
Okay.
You know, the the Cobblestone franchise has, uh, I believe there's a hundred and seventy locations throughout the country, plus or minus. I think most all of their facilities have a small lounge is really what it is. It's not a bar, it's a small bar, serve four or five stools behind it, but really the the area is the breakfast typical place, handful of tables. It's not your typical long bar and neon lights and any of that. Place for someone to come have a drink or two, table. Wind it down, it's not bucks.
Yeah, we're we're not trying to be too flashy, just a nice, quiet place for people to relax, have a drink or two. It's only going to be beer, one, very minimal cocktails. Nothing too crazy.
I would also say Tony managed the lounge at the Max for significant amount of time. Got all the training, proven responsible. Bar manager, so. It provides me some comfort.
I do have my tip certification, and anyone that does work behind our bar will also have certification.
And how many people do you have working in the that'll work behind it?
Uh, maybe just one or two.
One or two?
Yeah.
And can we get you to send copies of the tip certification to Linda, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, do we have any other questions for our guests?
Yes, looking at the map here that's presented to us here, it shows the bar, lounge, and a patio. Now, on this patio, I'm assuming that's outside?
Correct.
Is there any way or preventive measures to keep, uh, these individuals from taking alcohol from that patio?
We can lock it up, yeah, it wouldn't be a problem. The only thing I'm worried about with that is it could also be used as a fire escape as well, so if you're you're locking that off, it also
That part I understand, but I'm asking if there's any preventive measures to keep people from sneaking it from the patio on over.
Hanging it over?
Yeah.
Well, it's a it's a six-foot fence.
Yeah, it's a privacy fence. It's very tall.
But is there like padded keys or something to that fence to?
Yeah, right now, it is just a latch, but that's something that could be changed, a snap, a finger, it could change.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I think that's something with the fire department would have to handle or something like that, and work with you guys personally. I'm not qualified to make that decision, but I just don't want it to be a problem in the future where kids can use it as a an access point.
Okay.
No. I I if you don't mind, I'll tell you how they've handled it in the past, is they do the one one-way lock like you'd have on a swimming pool, and the only way you can have is a key to getting into the hotel or something like that, so that they have things in place that can put on.
I I believe that's basically what it is, how it's an inside latch. From the outside, there's it's like anything, there's a way, but it's not directly.
And the entrance isn't, is it? Just looks like a fence from the outside.
Further that bubble back.
Yeah, that's just my one concern about the future of our kids, so having access to it.
Good, good point. All right, do we have any other guests or questions for our guests? Seeing none? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the license for Cobblestone? Seeing none, is there anybody would like to speak in opposition of the license for Cobblestone?
Good evening, city council. I'm Galen Burnett, eight hundred South Sixth Street here in Lamar, Colorado. I'm concerned about us having additional liquor, a sales place's beer or hard wine or or liquor or whatever, because I I've seen what happens. Every ounce of alcohol that's consumed has detrimental effects. It hurts more than just the drinker. No. It 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 destroys. And so we we need to make sure that we try to protect. I'm not here to to get rid of all alcohol, but I'm here to not have the the alcohol increase, because a lot of people don't have the ability to control themselves. They think I can control myself, but they can't. And I don't want that to happen. Uh, the gentleman talked about safety, and I think that is a major concern. Um, Proverbs twenty-three, twenty-nine to thirty-five talks about, uh, drinking. It says, who has woe, who has sorrow, who has strife? Who has complaining? Who has wounds without cause? Who has redness of eyes? Those who tarry long over wine. Those who go to try mixed wine. Do not look at wine when it is red, when it sparkles in the cup and goes down smoothly. In the end, it bites like a serpent and stings like an adder. Your eyes will see strange things, and your heart utter perverse things. You will be like one who who lies down in the midst of the sea, like one who lies on the top of a mast. They struck me, you will say, but I was not hurt. They beat me, but I did not feel it. When shall I awake? I must have another drink. Drinking is addicting.
Okay.
And it causes problems. So this is an opportunity for us to say we don't need an additional bar or whatever for alcohol. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak against this license for Cobblestone in? Seeing none? Um, do we have any questions from the council before we close the floor?
Move, we close the hearing.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to close a public hearing for Lamar Hospitality. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
So the next item on the agenda would be, um, our next order of business, should I say, would be, uh, the action on this item. So what would the council's pleasure be?
Can we approve?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second um, to approve this license. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
All right. Oppose, same sign. abstaining or abstaining button?
Abstain.
Then we have a split vote with um, council member Bellamy abstaining, all others voting yes. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion pass for the license. Um, now we'll move on to our next public hearing. You're welcome to stay or go if you'd like to. Next public hearing is for the liquor license modification of premise application for Walmart Inc., D B A Walmart twenty-six seventy-two. Do we have a motion to move into public hearings?
So move. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Eye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. So just as before, we'll start off with the proof of publication and notes from the city clerk.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, we received the application, and on um, February twenty-seventh, I requested to schedule a public hearing for March thirteenth as close to seven o'clock as possible. It was published onsite and in the newspaper by March the second. Um, they've supplied everything that was needed to, um, show why they wanted the modification of premise. And other than that, I'm turning it over to Chief Police.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the city clerk or the chief of police?
I don't have any.
Seeing none, we will open it to the floor. We'll start off with, is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this license? Do we have some guests here? Please come up. And just state your name.
So my name is Marcus Marlowe, city resident of Los Angeles, actually.
Shirley Bagan, Lamar resident.
So we're with this proposal, we want to cater to a different branch of people. We have visitors that come through that are used to other states that sell wine, beer, it's such things. Uh, we want to be able to offer that for a dinner option for most people that we don't offer now, um, with portable prices. Um, it's like any other kind of competitive business, we want to put our part in there also. We have tons of safe practices that we're going to follow, same as we do with the beer now, including our safe procedure, which is scanning items, uh, assessing the situation, such as they're looking at the customer, if they appear over fifty, then we typically go ahead with the sale. If not, then we do ask for identification. Uh, we also follow the identification process for the new digital I D. So they're all trained in that. These are all things that we go through uh, quarterly and have to take a what's called a U learn, which is a learning program for anyone that's new, or just to refresh your course, to make sure everyone's up to speed on all regulations for us. Um, we also have a new safety measure that's being issued to us, which is this cap. If you guys want to see it, we can show it to you. It has a magnetic device that releases it, goes on the bottom, and it'll screw on securing the bottle, so it cannot be opened, even if someone were to walk out of the store without without possibly damaging the bottle, so.
Um, that'll be on all the wine bottles?
On all the wine bottles, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I think you guys have a copy of our map.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're extending it by, according to our calculations, twelve feet section located currently where our ambient beer is. So we'll replace that. We'll just have a refrigerated cooler for beer, and then the twelve-foot section for wine.
So it's just another four linear feet in sense?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have any questions for our visitors?
Yes, I have none.
You said that you card, you card everybody, it doesn't matter if they look fifty or what?
Anyone over the age of fifty? We can still card if we feel necessary, like if we fill the transaction.
So you're in for it all the time. It doesn't matter. Okay.
Correct.
And you have an internal training program for like a tip certification, is that correct?
We do. Um, so we have, they have online learning modules. It takes them through a simulated sale, um, in which it appears to be buying for someone who's younger. So like part of their simulation is a person who's old enough buying, but you can visually see that there's a group of teenagers in the background, so to train them on what to look for. Um, and then also training on how to tell if an I D is valid, um, including with the new digital I D.
Now, is that for every, um, cashier that comes through or?
That's for anyone who operates a register, so not just if they're on a front-end register, but if they operate in electronics. Um, also for online grocery dispensers. They are also trained, we actually on those I D, just like they do at the registers, they have to scan it or type in the date of birth that matches. And on those online orders, the person whose name is on the order has to match the I D, and that face has to be in front of us to dispense it in an office.
What about the self-checkout?
Self-checkout, yeah.
Self-checkout, it flags it and will not let it continue with the sale until a member of the store goes over and verifies I D.
And and likewise, I know you have some checkers that are underage, they cannot
Right, anyone that's under the age to consume it, uh, they can't sell it. We have to physically call either a team leader or member manager over to continue the sale for them.
Hey, you explained that this is going to take the place of the, uh, beer, is that correct?
The ambient beer, so we have a, we have a refrigerate, refrigerated beer and an ambient beer, and it'll take the place of the ambient beer, so.
And that's located in the back of the store?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there are plans to move that ambient beer anywhere else in the store?
We will just continue to carry. So we carry the same brands, warm or cold, but we will only carry it cold now.
My only concern is that you would move to the front of the store.
No, no. No. Hmm.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I don't have any.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that said, is there anybody that would like to speak against the, uh, liquor license modification of premise for Walmart?
Good evening again. I'm Galen Burnett, eight hundred South Sixth Street here in Lamar, Colorado. I'm here to urge you to take this opportunity to protect our city, protect the young people, protect the middle-aged, and protect the senior citizens. When you're involved with alcohol consumption. It makes you dumb. Now that's a strong statement. You know, that doesn't sound very good, but that's the truth. Alcohol destroys your thinking. Every ounce of alcohol, as we said earlier, destroys brain cells. It also uh, stops inhibitions. And problems like that 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 come from drinking alcohol. Many of the problems that we have in our society. Is because the people have been allowed to be drinking alcohol. When we look into the scriptures, we find that Noah, a guy who who uh, the Christians really like and appreciate. Uh, he was a man that 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 followed God and and he was used by God to to keep mankind here on the earth. But yet after he got out of the yard. He made some wine, drank it. And was laying nudie. Or nude. Non-clothed. In there, passed out. One of his sons went in, the youngest son, saw his dad there and uh, went out and got got his brothers. They, the brothers went in and covered him over, protecting. No one lost that ability. He shouldn't have been doing anything like that. We can read a little later in in the scriptures about uh, Lot. Lot had had two daughters. And we can read about him in the scriptures. He became really stupid and he went off and got drunk. Under his daughter's. Encouragement. You know, dads always like to do what what their daughters suggest, go with it. They got him drunk. They had to take cases of incest. Each of the daughters became pregnant by their father. Lot wouldn't have done that. Noah wouldn't have done that. But this alcohol causes your thinking to be distorted, to be twisted. Proverbs twenty. First one says, wine is a mocker, strong drink a brawler, and whoever is led astray by it is not wise. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of the license or the uh, license modification of premise application for Walmart? Seeing none? Do we have any questions from the council before we close the floor?
I don't have any. Not here.
I have one question. Have you ever had problems with beer being snuck out by minors that work there or is that? Pretty safe? Okay.
Okay. All right.
A motion that we move out of public.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to adjourn from the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. So the next order of business would be to make a decision on that premise? Modification.
Move, we approve.
A second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you. All right, the third one and our last one tonight is a public hearing for the liquor permit application for modification of premise for Safeway Stores forty-six Inc., DBA Safeway Store seventeen twenty-one. We just need a motion to move into the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to enter the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. So as before, we will start off with the city clerk, um. Review.
Okay, so again, we received the application um, regarding modification of premise for Safeway um, store forty-six um, for Safeway store number seventeen twenty-one. Um, on February twenty-seventh, I requested to schedule a public hearing for March the thirteenth. And um, it was published on site and in the newspaper by March the second twenty twenty-three. And other than that. Chief police.
Okay. All right. Do we have any questions from the council for the chief or for the city clerk?
I don't have any.
No questions here.
All right, seeing none, um, we'll open the floor to anyone that'd like to speak in favor of. You just let her just know your name. And who you're with.
Evening, my name's Hayden Arguello. I'm a Lamar resident. I'm the store manager of Safeway. Um. I know John, who's trying to actually attend the meeting, but he couldn't access the link. Um, he did send in the new schematic, which I think you guys received. Um, we also have the same safeguards in place as Walmart. Um, all of our checkers are trained um, through e-learning. Uh, to act to assess any situation. Um, it prompts on the register, it will not go forward until we actually see a physical ID. Um. And same thing there um, with our checkers that are underage, the manager has to go over there and actually go through um, and prove the transaction. Um. Um, we actually do have an auditor who comes through to uh, that Safeway has hired. They come through and actually audit us. In the three years that I've been there, we've never been issued a red card. Um, what they do is they come in, they'll get a restricted age item, bring it up to the register, and if they do uh, get a checker who does not ask for ID. It gets sent to our corporate and then they handle disciplinary action uh, from that point on.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Hayden before we move forward?
I'm here.
Anyone? Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this application for modification? Seeing none, is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition?
Good evening again. I'm Galen Burnett, eight hundred South Sixth Street here in Lamar, Colorado. God takes liquor seriously. A lot more seriously than what many of us as men do. Uh, when God was talking to Moses about setting up the religious part of their org- organization. He had Moses tell Aaron, you and your sons are not to drink wine as other or other four men to drink. Wherever you go, whenever you go into the tent of meeting, or you will die. He says, the reason that you're doing that is so that you can distinguish between the holy and the common, between the unclean and the clean. So you can teach the Israelites all the things, all the decrees, excuse me, all the decrees that the Lord has given them through Moses. Proverbs twenty-one seventeen says, whoever loves pleasure will be a poor man. He who loves wine and oil will not be rich. I live in a house. That was at one time paid for. By the previous owners. They lost it. They lost it because the gentleman could not control his alcohol usage. The house was totally paid for and then they had to borrow money. So that he could drink. You know, I I don't want that to happen. You know, I'm the product of a result of of that. You know, I can see that. I I live in that house. I got a great price on it. But it shouldn't have been. Proverbs twenty-three twenty says, be not among drunkards or among glutenous eaters of meat, for the drunkard and the glutton. Will come to poverty and slumber will clothe them with rags. This is an opportunity for our city. And not force people to have problems. So I recommend that you find a way to uh, to deny this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else would like to speak in opposition of this uh, liquor permit application for modification? Seeing none, are there any final questions or comments from the council before we close the floor?
I don't have any questions.
Good?
Good, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to close the floor.
A motion, second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
We have a split um, vote with all council members voting. Um, yes, and um, council member Jenkins abstaining, motion passes.
Okay. So the next uh, order of business is to make a decision on that license?
I move, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
We have a split vote with all council members voting yes with um, ex- with the exception of council member Jenkins abstaining.
Okay.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you all for attending. We'll move on to the next item on the bus- of business, which is to award bid for ElectroPro LLC for the Escondido Score Booth Electric Work. Kristen?
Um, we are working on the construction of the booth, so the next phase is the electrical work. Um, the original bid didn't include it, so um, per our policy, um, Stephanie called local electricians to call for bids. For the work on the scorers booth. She received two back. Um, there was one uh, from Grett for twenty-two thousand five hundred and one from ElectroPro for seventeen thousand four fifty. Um, so this would be to do uh, the running all of the electric, installing the electrical at the scorers booth building. Installing a breaker panel, installing four lights inside, one light at the door, five receptacles and wire the two scoreboards. Um, so staff is recommending that we award the bid to ElectroPro. Um, and allow the mayor to sign the contract once it's approved by the city attorney and the building.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. To approve the bid and allow the mayor to sign upon approval by the city administrator and building official. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is opioid settlement funds, and this was initiated by Chief Miller. Looks like he's coming in to speak to us.
Good evening. Um, this is another one of the large settlements from the opioid, um. Prices that we went through here the past couple of years. Um, this is the same process that we went through the last time. With um, the big three pharmaceutical companies. Uh, this is just some of the. Smaller companies, I guess, were also distributing opioids during this time. Um, the process is the same, the opt-out that we did last year. Is still in place. We can change that annually if we want to. Um, but it's right now, we would still be opted out. This is just saying we will not sue the companies um, any further. We're done after they give us the money through the state and the money will go to our region, which is region nineteen.
So we're just approving the participation in the settlements?
Correct.
With the five companies. Okay. Do we have any questions for the chief from the council?
Question I had was, if money comes back to our region nineteen, what is that used for? Is it?
So there's a board um, comprised of, I I believe, every county in our region. Was from Werfino County up north, I think up to Cheyenne County, then the whole southeast corner of the state, I believe is our region. Um, and the board has determined four different things to. Put that money towards. Um, that money, right now they're in the RFP, the request for proposals to use that money um, for our entire region. Um, and everybody on that board has, and it gives direction of what we want that to be.
Okay.
Specifically, specifically.
So it's like drug. So so uh, education is one, prevention, treatment. And I think there was a law enforcement component in there with the four. Um, that's the the broad the umbrella right now.
Okay.
And then it'll be narrowed down from there once the proposals back.
Okay, because this is like a nineteen year settlement, is that right?
I don't know about these, but the original ones, they were split nineteen years. I think one was twelve and there was another one for another one. So. It's a seems like a large amount of money upfront, but it's coming in over such a long period of time. I think the last time we checked, it was like nineteen hundred dollars a year is what we would get. Um, and it would. I I, my opinion is it's going to greatly benefit our region if we put that nineteen hundred dollars in there, because that money's going to go a lot farther there, rather than us trying to run our own programs. Uh, and we can use the region to run those programs.
Oh, for the education aspect of that, so.
Yep.
Okay. All right, do we have any other questions for the chief?
I don't have any.
I move, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so the last item on the agenda is miscellaneous. Um, do we have any miscellaneous items? Were there any questions that were asked? None on Facebook? No, none of those. Do we have any other items we need to discuss in miscellaneous?
Not this. Not today.
Okay, um, at the next meeting, we do have a work session with the county commissioner scheduled uh, before the council meeting on the twenty-seventh, is that correct? So um, we'll be having a, and that'll be a discussion about moving forward with our um, community development master plan that we received a grant for. The county also received a grant at the same time, so we're going to try to work together and move forward with that uh, master plan development over the next year together. So that'll be the discussion on that night. Um, if there's no other questions or comments, we will all open entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
And motion passed. Thank you very much for attending and we look forward to seeing you.